Call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order if the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kaiser.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nakey.
Here.
Commissioner Leung.
Here.
Commissioner Osik.
Here.
Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook is absent and in her place is guest counselor Vanessa Nordike.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Thank you, and if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have nobody signed up to address the Housing Authority. Counselor Kaiser, Consent Calendar?
I'm sorry, President Hoy, I was distracting her there.
So I believe, I don't think we have any additions.
Yes.
All right. So for the consent calendar, we have, what can I get a motion, or make a motion for the consent calendar?
It's been moved by Counselor Kaiser, seconded by Counselor Osik.
Sorry, I'm out of practice, it's been awhile.
It's alright.
I'm at a Housing Authority meeting I've been at, so on the consent calendar, we have 3.1A, which are minutes, from the May 28th, Salem Housing Authority. Then we have item 3.2A, which is recommended appointments to the Salem Housing Advisory Committee, and then, item 3.3A, which is a partnership with CASA of Oregon to provide access to individual development accounts. And that is it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no public hearings, no special orders of business, we have an information report. Do you, any questions regarding the information report, or presentations from staff?
So, I'm Nicole Youth, I'm the Acting Housing Administrator, and you'll see in the Program Management Report that we're preparing for the National Night Out, which we hold at Parkway Village Apartments, or Parkway East and West as it's now known. We do invite the surrounding community to also attend, and we seek out donations from several entities, and our group has acquired DJs, bands, and different activities, so we hope to ensure that this is a great event for our clients that live in our properties at Parkway and the surrounding neighborhood, to bring in the community together. As well as you'll see that, in there, we also have 195 HRAP enrollees currently enrolled, so we've almost peaked at that 200 points. We are also holding the graduation for the HRAP program, for those who have graduated on to the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program this week on Thursday, which is a great event, and exciting for them to be able to graduate off HRAP and move on to stability.
What time will that be?
At 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Anything else? We have questions? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. It's really not a question, and I just, I don't know what the appropriate time is to do that, so I'd just like to recognize and thank Housing Director Andy Welch for his long and dedicated and quite successful service to the City of Salem as head of the Salem Housing Authority, and I would ask that that be passed on to Mr. Welch.
Thank you. Commissioner Nakey?
Thank you, and I apologize for not emailing staff earlier on this. On the Program Management Report regarding the VASH program, the last sentence, there's a number that was shoved around. What is the real number of veterans we have housed, out of the 64?
That six is actually supposed to be 56 of 64, my apologies.
I thought that was gonna be the case, but I just wanted to make sure.
So it should be 56 of 64?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, no further business before the Housing Authority, we are adjourned.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for June 24th to order if the recorder please call a roll.
Board Member Kaiser.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Dito.
Board Member Nakey.
Here.
Board Member Leung.
Here.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook is absent, guest counselor Nordike.
Present.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No.
No, okay. This is time for public comment. If you recall, it's three minutes, the yellow light goes on at two, it's an orange, whatever your color choice is, it will go on, and you have one minute to complete your remarks, and then, when the red light goes on, you'll be asked to stop, unless you choose to stop voluntarily, which is always a good choice. Okay?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We do have written testimony that was provided, we had a, all the counselors got it in email, but you don't have it on your desk, because there was a problem at the printer, so if you want to see a printed version, I have the one copy, otherwise it's in your email, so please refer to your email for the written testimony for the Urban Renewal Agency.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Dick Withnell.
Yes, I'm Dick Withnell, 2650 Commercial Street Southeast. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of the public for serving you guys. I ran into the mayor just a second ago, and I said I knew a bunch of consultants that he probably, they were psychologists actually, did, he did see why you guys served, but I really do appreciate your serving. I'm the co-chair of Union Gospel Mission on their $15 million project, and I'm just here to say, to accept the staff's recommendation for the funding for the Union Gospel Mission. I guess at my older age, I'm in the period of not just covering expenses, but to purchasing results, and this is a prime example of purchasing a result, and I encourage you to do the recommendation of the staff. Thank you.
Before we go any further, I do want to acknowledge our guest counselor and Urban Renewal Agency member Vanessa Nordike. Vanessa, really pleased you're here, thank you very much. Candy Sue Hughes.
Good evening, I'm Candy Sue Hughes, 7901 Subaru Road. I'm the Chairman of the Board at the Union Gospel Mission in Salem. I'm just here to tell you, I've been on the Board for 14 years, and volunteering at the mission for 28. We have seen firsthand the difference the mission has made in a lot of the men's lives, and women, and children, in the Salem-Kaiser area. I've also seen the need, as you all have, just by looking around downtown. I think that this would actually help to meet some of that need, we want to bring the people inside, instead of having them outside, help get their lives changed and turned around, and that's what the mission is all about. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you. Dan Clem.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Dan Clem, I'm the Executive Director for the Salem Union Gospel Mission at 745 Commercial Street Northeast. Thank you for, on many fronts, but for allowing us to come forward and ask for you to partner with us, and community, and thousands of donors, and a lot of folks that volunteer and support the mission in so many ways. For the last 65 years, been caring for those who ended up in trouble, whether it was their decision, or life just forced on them, and we are so proud to be a part of Salem's rescue network, but in fact, restoration network, where men move forward, they graduate from recovery programs, and they actually become people that are living next door to us, and contributing members of society. We bring this request forward to you, understanding that we've asked for exceptions to policy, and in fact, asked for an amount that's over and above the policy amount, but we know that it's a great investment, along with our other partners, in being able to provide the capacity that we need to provide for the numbers that are homeless out there. It's approaching 2,000, and we're just hoping that we're able to serve an increasing larger portion of that. We do, I want to thank you also for the partnership that we have with Salem's Housing Rental Assistance Program. UGM provides the move-in boxes, when you provide the keys, we're right behind with furniture and move-in boxes, and it's been a partnership that's been on for about a year, year and a half now, and we're just seeing a lot of people well-grounded and stable because of that. We believe that we meet their criteria, that you've outlined in the code, and with the recent receipt of the Murdoch Charitable Trust grant, we know that for the $15 million project, that we're making great progress. This will put us up over the top in terms of our timeline for where we're at now, so we're making good progress in the fundraising. All of the land use issues have been resolved, there are no more appeals, and we're ready to go. As soon as we raise approximately another couple of million dollars, it sounds like an easy statement, but it's not, it's really hard. But a lot of people have been generous, and we've got a, we've got a plan for how we close up this campaign by the end of this year, and hopefully start construction next year. So if you haven't donated yet, think about it, but please, please know that this grant will really provide the boost that we need to finish it up. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, thank you then, Dan. Okay, the consent calendar, Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
The consent calendar includes item 3.1A, the June 10th, 2019 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes, 3.2A, it's a resolution to approve the 19-3 URA adopting the 2020 Urban Renewal Agency and City of Salem budget. Item 3.3A, which is approval of capital improvement grant program, exceptions for maximum grant amount and eligibility restrictions to allow a grant to the Union Gospel Mission to construct a men's mission facility, and that concludes the consent calendar.
Very good. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we don't have any public hearings or special orders of business, we do have an information report though. Have I got any questions on administrative purchases?
Let's see, Kristen Rutherford.
This is your chance to put it right on the carpet. Okay?
All right.
Oh, there we go.
I can't let a chance go by, this is on item 6A. I'm just curious as to what, Church Street Pedestrian Bridge Replacement, what is that? I'm looking at urban renewal.
Are you looking at administrative purchases?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, which Church Street Bridge, because the ones that I can think of, they might not be in the Urban Renewal District.
It is, it's the north.
Let me make sure I've got the right one open here.
Is that Nap Street, is that the connector?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
You know which one it is? Now that, you know which bridge it is?
Yes, I was thinking, this is the one down by the hospital, is it one, yeah, okay, great. That's terrific, I'm all in favor of pedestrian bridges.
Can she explain that better than I heard?
Very good.
Brilliant with the words.
Did you want to speak? I didn't ask if anyone else did, on, as a public comment?
I was just, I was wondering.
No, no, you gotta come down, tell us who you are, and go through the...
My name's Chad.
Come on down and get, tell us in the mic.
So, I actually signed...
What's your name?
Oh, my name's Chad, Chad Busta, nice to meet you.
Where do you live?
So, oh, I've been in the Salem area for about a week, I've been in Oregon for a little while longer.
You haven't been here long enough, it's Oregon.
Wait, say that again?
Just messing with you.
Sorry. So initially, I signed up for the public comments later on.
Oh.
But the reason why I raised my hand there was specifically, the City Council is voting on the agenda items.
Yeah.
How much do people in the general audience have as far as responding to possibly disagreeing with some of the items?
No, you don't.
We have to wait, we have to wait until later on.
You have this chance right now, you can say you didn't like something, you're welcome to.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Alrighty, I think that's everything, we're adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for June 24th to order, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nakey.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook is absent, guest counselor Nordike.
Present.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Alrighty, additions or deletions?
A lot of moving parts tonight on this agenda, Mr. Mayor. We have, again, more written testimony that you have not seen on your desks, but you have in the email, I have a written copy here if you would like to see it. You did get one version, I believe, earlier, this is version two.
What's it regarding?
This is regarding the City of Salem budget, it is testimony, written testimony from Lori Doherty, and it's an email that went to all of us.
Excellent, thank you.
So if you're interested, you'd like to see it in writing, you're welcome to grab it off my desk. And then revisions to the agenda, we have, let's see here, 3.1B, which is, we have revised draft minutes to the draft City Council work session minutes from June 17th. Item 3.2F, adoption of the fiscal year 2020 City of Salem budget, it's revised attachment three, which I believe is the, let's see here, no. It's a summary of council amendments. And then, we have item 6B, which is notice of appeals received, two appeals have been received for the decision on the application for a 34 lot subdivision, and will be heard by the Planning Commission unless called up by the City Council.
Okay.
And that concludes the revisions to the agenda.
And what was the number on that one again?
The last one, 6B.
6B. Okay, very good. Alrighty, any discussion? Okay, we've got them. Yeah, all those in favor of the deletions, additions, and revisions, yes.
Is this the appropriate time to offer comment on item 6B, or will that happen later this evening?
Not yet.
Thank you.
That'll happen later, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, I believe we still need the motion and a second on this consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had a motion.
That's what she's talking about. I moved additions and deletions to the agenda, we need a second, I believe.
Second.
Okay. All those, all those, that's Kaiser, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now we're to counsel city manager comment. I got a couple. I was honored to be invited to speak at the 100th anniversary of the Dahlke Construction Company, and I had a chance to go out and meet with a large group of people out to celebrate that. The Dahlke Company's been here for 100 years. I had a chance to figure out how often a company reaches 100 years in the United States, about less than half a percent of the companies that have started made 100 years, so it was a pretty remarkable accomplishment, it was a very nice event. The other was on Saturday, we kicked off the Right Share Program here in Salem, you remember Evan Osborne, Jen Osborne, Osborne Adventures? Well, the adventure continues, and they have now begun putting up bike racks, this one happened to be over at Courthouse Square, on the northeast corner, and they've got several of these kiosks around the city, and it's a very interesting program, stop by, you can figure out how to sign up for it, and begin taking advantage of it. Anyone else? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things, all of which relate to what a vital and exciting city Salem is. The first one is, I'm gonna get this wrong, but it's Salem Makes Music, or Make Music Salem Day, which is the summer solstice. It was terrific from about noon time until 10:00 or 11:00, all sorts of bands playing, from solo musicians to electrified bands, and just tons of people all over. I know we ran into Counselor Osik down there, and it's, it's a good demonstration of how a vital downtown is important to a city, and I would like to thank everybody who worked on that, the city staff, as well as the volunteers that make Salem music, because it was terrific, and I look forward to it next year. Next, on behalf of the Mayor on Saturday, and I was honored to present a resolution at Juneteenth celebration, which was at the Pavilion and Riverfront Park, representatives from the Police Department, Salem Police Department, from the Sheriff's Department, from the School District, and then the NAACP, as well as many people celebrating this important day in American history, and lots of interesting and informative talks and lectures about what this really means to not just people who celebrated Juneteenth on June 19th, 1865, but everybody in this community. And then, in the afternoon, and my wife accompanied me to all of these things, we went to the Sikh ceremony, they had a, it was the anniversary of one, the deaths of one of the important Sikh martyrs, and they had a parade from the temple down through by South Salem High School, and the Gilmore Field there, and then back to the temple, and they had a fantastic celebration on the Gilmore Field, baseball fields, food, dancing, pageants, it was terrific. And all three of these things are things that make Salem a terrific city, and I was happy to attend them all.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Counselor Leung.
Thank you, Mayor. So I also had the opportunity to attend the Make Music Salem Day, and I actually was at the Capitol watching some of the performance there. My daughter in particular, her school performed at the front of the Capitol, so it was a really great opportunity to watch that happen. Also, over the weekend, what I love about living here specifically in the Willamette Valley and in Salem, is that there's a lot of farms that you could go and do U-Picks, so you could go get fresh fruits and fresh vegetables, and I ended up going blueberry picking this weekend, so it was fun to do that, we picked about 15 pounds of blueberries, and we gave away several pounds to people within the community.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Alrighty, public comment. Great, these are for comments, for items on the agenda. We'll also pick up, we have one person who has a comment on an issue not on the agenda, so we'll be picking that person up as well. Danielle Meyer.
Good evening, counselors, mayor, and city staff. On your agendas tonight are a set of recommended changes to Chapter 97 of Salem Revised Code. The two big changes in our code reflect ensuring accessibility in public accommodations, the other changes are minor routine maintenance. When hearing the first reading tonight, I hope that you can see these revisions through the lens of providing access to basic information and daily needs that many, many people in our city never have to consider. Even though these changes are reflective of the needs of small percentages of our population, they are very important to the quality of life, health, and safety of these populations. The Human Rights Commission understands recommendations prepared by city staff under the direction of Counselor Kaiser ensure that closed captioning is not just available to those who need it in places of public accommodation, but requires it to be turned on, on 50% of all broadcast display devices in public spaces at all times. The Human Rights Commission finds that this recommendation is in the best interest of equal access to information and public safety for all the people of our city who rely on non-audible forms of communication. The Commission found the 50% requirement to be the minimum sufficient to fulfill the needs of the deaf and hard-of-hearing communities in Salem. The Commission supports and voted to recommend these changes be adopted by the Mayor and City Council. The Human Rights Commission has also reviewed proposed changes to Chapter 97 regarding public bathroom and locker room access involving people under the definition of gender identity. In 2002, Salem amended its Human Rights Code to expressly prohibit gender identity discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodation. In 2018, our Commission's LGBTP rights task force worked with city staff and city attorney to draft amendments to our code removing exceptions requiring proof of transitional status that are inherently discriminatory towards gender identity, and no longer conform with state laws and Bureau of Labor and Industry guidelines. The Commission voted in November of 2018 to recommend these revisions concerning public accommodation and gender identity to Mayor and City Council. Every person in this room, in the city and the state, nation and world, faces many challenges. The human experience is difficult, and no matter who we are, or how we identify, we all have to work very hard to find our way through the journey that is our lives. How needlessly more difficult it is when you experience discrimination around very basic life functions. Try to consider obstacles such as having to show documentation of your identity to go to the bathroom while others can go when and where they see fit, or how perilous would an emergency be for you if you could not receive necessary information that others can hear. Speaking as Chair of the City of Salem Human Rights Commission, I am asking you move forward on the Agenda Item 7.1A towards adopting the recommended revisions, and as a transgender woman and resident of Salem, I am asking you to use your hard-earned privilege of public office to remove these discriminatory obstacles from the lives of transgender, hard-of-hearing, and deaf communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions? Oh, sorry, Counselor Kaiser?
Thank you, thank you, Danielle. I just also want to thank the Human Rights Commission for really taking a look at this and having the discussion around the topics, and especially the closed captioning ordinance, I really appreciate all of your work that you do on the Commission.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to echo Counselor Kaiser's thanks. I attended a Human Rights Commission meeting recently, and I'm just always impressed every time I go with the hard work and the passion that people bring to the issues, and really bring an important perspective, and I appreciate your leadership in that group.
Thank you. Counselor Leung?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Danielle.
Hi.
I actually was part of the Human Rights Commission before, so it was really a great pleasure last year for me to serve as vice chair along with Chair Danielle, so I'm happy that you're here, and happy to see all the work that the Commission has been doing since then. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle, thank you very much. Ron Ikas.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Ron Ikas. I live at 940 Salem Heights Avenue, where I've lived since 1989. I'm here to request that the City Council take up review of the decision listed in, as item 6B in your agenda, regarding a 34-unit development on eight acres bordering Salem Heights Avenue. I've been advised by your legal counsel that testimony requesting council review of an appeal is severely limited to pretty much just asking you to take it up for review. It's hard to make a case when you can't refer to the nature of the case, even in general terms, but I'll try and stay within the bounds of the advice given. I am an appellant in the case, but I'm not here to argue the issues that are on appeal or the issues in the case, nor am I here because I believe council review will somehow engender a ruling that the appellant's favor. I'm not anti-development, nor do I necessarily oppose developing the property in question. I do recognize that there must be a threshold of some kind to warrant council review, otherwise the council would be reviewing every appeal. I'm here to ask review because I believe this case warrants the crossing of that threshold, whatever it happens to be. The reasons are easier to understand if the council is aware of the following, all of which I believe are givens, they're publicly known, and they're not up for dispute in the case. First is the nature of Salem Heights. It's about a mile long with sightlines restricted by multiple hills, a tree-lined street in an older neighborhood, it's in the Candelaria and Salem Heights school neighborhood.
Ron, we're starting to get into the substance.
You mean describing the street as a, this is not a substance, this is...
I'm just, I'm just giving you a fair warning.
Well...
What you could do, and I, we've talked about it, but what you could do is put us all into an ex parte contact which would...
By describing Salem Heights as it exists today?
Yeah, we're getting into the substance of the thing. I think it's just for your own, I'm just trying to be helpful here, but you go for it, and we'll see what happens.
All right.
And let's give him back his time, I don't want to...
Yes, thank you. I'm just trying to describe... I'm just trying to describe what is already known, the condition of Salem Heights. It's a, in a neighborhood for two schools, significant pedestrian traffic, but no sidewalks and no bike lanes. Another given is the transportation system plan designates Salem Heights as a collector street, but it also identifies it as an unimproved collector. Furthermore, the city's begun a process with citizens in the area to develop alternatives for a refinement plan to guide future development of the street. That's a process that's separate from the case and will continue regardless of the outcome. While these, with these givens aren't in dispute, I suggest the appeal is warranted because it has a major impact on the neighborhood that goes beyond simply those people living on Salem Heights, because it has broad implications for how certain development criteria, as well as inferred standards and templates in the transportation service plan are applied to unimproved streets. And it's warranted because the decisions have implications for the development of preferred alternatives by those citizens participating in the city sponsored development of a refinement plan for Salem Heights improvement. And, give, excuse me, given that I don't know what the threshold is...
Time really is up now, it is. Any questions for Mr. Ikas? Yes, Ms. Nordike.
Sure. And again, Ms. Ikas, without going into the specifics or the purpose for the potential subdivision, I'm just curious, did you consult with neighbors in the Salem Heights area before coming here?
Again, Ms. Nordike, we are getting into a real problematic area. We're into a public hearing on this measure. We may get a chance to do that. If we don't, the Planning Commission will. This is not the time for that public hearing.
Um, I'm, this is not a public hearing, but we do have...
I'm sorry, Ron, you've had your time. Anyone else?
Well, I was asked a question, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, actually, she didn't complete her question. We're done. We're done. Thank you.
Well, the answer will be obvious as other people testify.
Bill Dixon.
Mayor Bennett and city council members, my name is Bill Dixon. I live at 608 Salem Heights Avenue South. I have lived there for the past 13 years. This street provides a gateway for my wife and me to the rest of the city, both by car and on foot. The tree-rich neighborhood that surrounds Salem Heights is a source of peace to us every day. I am here this evening to urge the council to take up review of the case listed as Agenda Item 6B regarding a 34-unit development on eight acres adjacent to Salem Heights. Council review is appropriate because the project will have a significant impact on an entire neighborhood, not just on those adjacent to the development. In addition, the project explores core principles in the council's approach to development.
Bill, we're starting down that road again, where we're going to get a public hearing on this very likely. That's when this information becomes appropriate. Right now, you are hurting your case. You could be creating a situation for us where we're going to have real difficulty conducting a public hearing on this, because we've now heard testimony on this issue. You're setting up an appeal beyond us. You just, I really suggest, if your point is, please bring this up and hold a hearing, say so, and stop.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
I appreciate that advice. With that in mind, I ask that you exercise your authority and call up this matter for council review. Thank you for attention to this matter and for your service to the community.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Nathan Reitman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nathan Reitman. I reside at 475 Salem Heights Avenue South. I guess what I would say, I have plenty to say about this issue, but what I, this issue of the notice of decision that's Agenda Item 16B is significant to me and my family. It's significant to many, many people in the community, and I hope for that reason it will be significant enough for you to take the time to review it. I think it presents some very significant issues for decision that will have widespread implications, and I think the council would want to be in a position to decide those issues in the first instance, given the significance of the issues. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Nathan. Any questions? Okay. Let's see. Toni Derry, do I have that right? And Linda Thompson, I'm showing two names. Are you Linda? You're Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. My name is Toni Denny, and I live at 2200 Lancaster Drive Southeast in the Sundial Mobile Home Park. We're here tonight to request that you consider a zone change. There are approximately 370 homes and about 600 residents. We have a diverse community of valuable population, including the elderly, ill, veterans, disabled, widows, and people in various stages of care. Many of our residents are low-income and cannot afford to move even if they could find alternate housing. They have paid more than the market value for, on their trailers, and are close to be close to the hospitals and to their doctors. They have made costly improvements on their homes, and they would greatly lose should they lose them. The state has assisted in low-energy improvements at the cost of about $10,000 each. Our residents stand to lose everything if the park was redeveloped. Additionally, we are reaching out to other mobile home parks in the city, and we have received favorable interest in gaining support for the request of a zone change for the city's mobile home parks. As you know, we have previously sent information showing aggressive profit corporations targeting mobile home parks across the nation to purchase and redevelop them, causing, this would cause a significant economic loss and displace our residents. We, our park was recently sold, and so we, this is a concern that, of what is going on. A manager in the Oregon housing industry stated that the loss to the elderly from the displacement shortens their lives because they cannot recover from the loss of community. We made a offer, and it was, was rejected. We made an offer to buy the park as residents, but it was rejected. The park has apparently been sold to a family-owned business, and we are, but we are joining with other mobile home parks in Salem to request a zone change similar to the one passed in the city of Portland. We are interested in a new zone that would provide additional protection against redevelopment of mobile home parks and the displacement of our residents. We request the city council approve, approve the city to begin work on this matter. Portland created a new zone for manufactured dwelling parks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Time's up. Ms. Thompson, do you want to speak? You have to.
I live at 2232 42nd Avenue Southeast, Unit 327, Salem. And I'm here with Ms. Denny regarding the mobile home issue, and I'm not sure where she led off on this, but I could finish it. Did you cut her off for a reason, or can I finish?
Yeah, she was out of time.
Okay, I'll just finish what, it's just a little bit left.
Okay.
The city of Portland has created a new zone for manufactured dwelling parks to provide additional protections against the redevelopment of mobile home parks. In the city's Amendment Ordinance Number 189137, it states that the preservation of existing affordable housing is one of the most cost-efficient actions that the city can take that will have an immediate impact on the ability of lower-income families to stay in their current homes and communities, and for their children to stay in their local schools. In their comprehensive plan, manufactured housing plays a small but important role in the affordable housing market and is often the housing of last resort for households that are struggling with, struggling to cope with rising rents. This is at the website wwwportlandoregon.gov. Their policy is to encourage preservation as a low, moderate-income housing option; to evaluate plans and investments for potential redevelopment pressures on existing mobile home parks, and the impact on park residents to protect this housing option; three, to facilitate replacement and alteration of manufactured homes with an existing mobile home park. Also, they encourage nonprofit ownership. We would like the city of Salem to look into a similar zone creation. The state of Oregon has public policy against homelessness. The state has offered notices of funding availability for manufactured dwelling park preservation. The state in the director's message dated February 2019 states that creating permanent supportive housing is a must for chronic homelessness and in an effort to stabilize the state's most vulnerable populations. Keeping the 55 mobile home parks from redevelopment into another type of community is a way to avoid this vulnerable population from slipping into homelessness and requiring additional state assistance. We believe a zone change will support the state's policy interests in preventing homelessness and providing for low, middle-income housing. Therefore, please consider our request for the city of Salem to begin working on creating a similar zone change to add protections for mobile home parks in the city of Salem, and in an effort to provide low, middle-income housing and to combat homelessness and other issues and other losses to our vulnerable populations.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank both of you for coming down and raising this important issue. I represent East Salem, and this is an issue for the entire city, but it's especially important for East Salem. We have a lot of mobile home parks there, and it's similarly situated to yours. And so I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and I'm hoping that we can do some good work for you.
Yes.
I will alert the council, you'll, you'll see under 5:00 AM, bringing you a motion to begin dealing with this problem. Okay? Alrighty, next, Phil Carver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Phil Carver. I'm representing 350 Salem. My address is 10007 Newport Road Southeast, 97306. I'm here to thank the council for appropriating $50,000 to provide for a climate action plan. And I also thank Councilor Anderson and, and I think Councilor Hoy for clarifying that it's not for climate activities, it's for actually having a plan. And the climate crisis that we face today is a serious issue, very serious, and a few small activities, of which $50,000 would be a drop in the bucket, do not address this. We really need a transformation of the way we use energy over the next 20 to 30 years. Also, it would not address the need for resilience. I just reviewed the Milwaukee, Oregon Plan, and it has almost as many resilience items as it does climate, reducing emissions. And we clearly are not going to avoid climate change, we're already in the midst of it. And I've talked about this before in front of all of you, and the, each department really needs to have a thorough review of how its activities are being impacted by climate change. And the basic message is, if it's happened, it's going to happen again and again. Even if it's a 500-year flood, we're going to see lots of 500-year floods, because the climate is not stable. And so we're going to have to plan for things that seem kind of outlandish. Can't spend a lot of money on really outlandish things, but we need to plan for a reasonable range, given the climate science. So, and thank you, and, and finally, we advocate tentatively for using a consultant to prepare the climate action plan. Two reasons for that. One is a consultant can, who's been involved in a lot of climate action plans, can consolidate that information, present it clearly, and show examples of what's working in other cities. There's a lot of cities in Oregon that have these plans. And second, the plan has to cover all agencies of the city. And if, whatever division the employee is in, he will be an interloper in some other division. So if it's a water resource issue, and the person's from the Planning Commission, well then the water department's going to say, well, what are you meddling in our business? Whereas a consultant can have an overview and doesn't have a particular administrative seat that they're sitting in. So we think that a consultant would be a better way to prepare a climate action plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the fact that your organization has demonstrated really dogged persistence in coming back to city council meetings, as well as many budget committee meetings in which I serve, to inform, provide suggestions, constructive criticism, and that's appreciated. And it's always been respectful, it has always been in service to the city, and I very much appreciate that. So, thank you so much for you and all the other work that, the array of perspectives that we've received from folks on behalf of your organization. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Andy, Andine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Andy Alexander-Andine. I live at 695 Salem Heights Avenue South. And I will simply ask the council to call up for review the recent staff approval to develop the Ren Heights subdivision on Salem Heights Avenue.
Thank you. Kristi Aquinas-Gallagher.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for having me here. My name is Krista Aquinas-Gallagher. I'm here as a community member tonight. I work for the state of Oregon as a policy analyst for the Oregon Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Services. I'm also on the Human Rights Commission and many different community commissions, human rights activities, different types of work that I do. I've lived here in Oregon for almost five years, and I lived in Turkey for many years before that. I love Salem. I'm happy to call it home to work with the deaf and hard-of-hearing community here. And here, today, I want to ask you to pass the closed captioning amendment for the city of Salem in public spaces. And that applies to restaurants, televisions that are in those spaces. And it's really not just about accessibility and equality as far as watching the game on TV, it's really more about watching the news, anything that might happen, any emergencies we don't have access to, and we're in the dark. We then have to depend on other people to give us that information, which we should not have to do in those situations. So it's a big thing to ask for just turning on the closed captions, not really. So I think it would help the deaf and hard-of-hearing community a lot to be more involved in the city itself, to feel welcomed, and I would really appreciate if you would all consider that, and just turn on the captions for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Great, thank you. Chad? Chad? Yeah.
Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if I have pieces of paper.
Here.
If I could approach the podium.
No, you come down here to the podium and speak, really is how it works. And if you have some printed materials, Chad, they go to the city recorder up here. This fellow will take it right here and make sure it gets into the record. Great.
I'm immediately going to, in the most positive of lights, hope in the goodness of ourselves as human beings, start with your name. My name's Chad. Okay? I'm holding here the evidence of what the city of Salem, state of Oregon, and the entire United States of America is on a daily basis. We are the English language. It's the foundation of our entire government. It's known... It's known. We have an instance, an example of it here. I have my cellphone. We have our cellphones. It is the truth of our reality because we remember me speaking these words tonight, and therefore the words that I am speaking that you're hearing right now are a part of all of our memory of ourselves here this evening. So if we leave those doors here tonight and we want to be the same reality in the same city, in the same society, that means we will be the same language. It makes us murderers. It makes us rapists. And it makes us child molesters on a daily basis. Police officers in all of our jurisdictions and all of our cities in the United States of America have statistics that we have been taking as a society for many years now, at least 20. And it's long enough to know if Salem had six murders either last year or the year before, it is likely to believe in this city that another one is going to occur. If we, as human beings, who think we have not committed those crimes, and if police officers concur, but as a society, if we are trying to stop that sort of activity and criminality in general, and it continues to happen, even if we think we are not directly involved, we are failures. And one of the things that has made the most sense to me in my entire life is the idea that if the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States of America, and the constitutions of all 50 states are the basis and the foundation of our governments, they are our language. It's a specific language. It's English. But it also means that everything that exists in the Declaration, in the Constitution, in our state's constitutions are causing the things that are happening in our society. It's the logic of everything that we claim and we teach in our public schools. And in our public schools, even though we have been in denial of it in the past, which is why we have a degree of innocence right now, that innocence goes away when a person knows the truth, and police officers call it negligence. If you know something and you don't do something about it, you're considered criminally negligent. It's a federal offense. If we, as a society, and we know deep down inside that we believe through practice and repetition and memorization, that we teach ourselves as children to store this language inside of our minds so that we can travel around.
Chad, your time's up. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the council? Okay. Let's go back here to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following exceptions. Item 3.2D pulled by staff. Item 3.2F pulled by Counselor Anderson.
Just a minute. 3.2D was pulled by?
3.2D pulled by staff. They have an addendum to a resolution.
Okay.
3.2F by Counselor Anderson. 3.3B by Counselor Anderson. 3.3C by Counselor Leung.
All righty. I want to move the... Who seconded that? Ah, okay. Ossik seconded.
All right. I'll go over the remaining items then. We have item 3.1A, the draft city council meeting minutes from June 10, 2019. We have 3.1B, which is the June 17, 2019 draft city council work session minutes. Item 3.2A is the FY 2019-2020 downtown parking district budget and parking tax. 3.2B is a resolution dedicating real property on the recorded plot of Whitscape Green, Phase 1, located in Dragon Flight Court Southeast and Egress Avenue Southeast as a public right-of-way. Item 3.2C is a resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriation authority in the self-insurance fund. Item 3.2E is a resolution regarding the state's shared revenues. Item 3.3A is the intergovernmental agreement with the Salem Mary Mass Transit District. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay. Public hearings.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding exemption from competitive bidding process and authorization of an alternative contracting method for the Garin Island Water Treatment Facility Improvements Project. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, city council members. I'm Brian Martin, city engineer. And tonight, we are seeking your approval as a local contractor view board to exempt the city from the competitive bidding process, also known as design bid build, and allow an alternate contracting method known as construction manager, general contractor, for short, that's CMGC, for the long-term improvements at the Garin Island Water Treatment Facility. The CMGC form of contracting will allow us to bring construction contractor on board early in the design process to provide input on the design, including value engineering, to identify cost-effective project phasing, provide input on constructability items, and provide real-time information on market conditions for managing project costs, and most importantly, to allow us to start construction early on items of design that are completed ahead of the entire design package. Under a design bid build program, which is the competitive process, construction cannot start until all the design is complete and bidding occurs. The selection process for a CMGC contractor is a competitive process that relies on multiple criteria, including qualifications, prior experience, project approach, cost for pre-construction support, overall staff costs, overhead, and profits. So costs are also considered through the CMGC process. Once a CMGC contractor is under contract, they will become a working member of the project team, and they'll help provide information to designers to help implement cost-effective solutions. As design progresses, a CMGC contractor will begin preparing guaranteed maximum price for all improvements that will be constructed. And once that guaranteed maximum price has been established through negotiations, any savings in construction will be returned to the city. Under the normal design bid build process, those savings actually end up as profit to the contractor. This is the same project delivery method, the CMGC, that is currently being used on the new police facility and previously used at the Willow Lake Wastewater Treatment Facility. We believe it's the best project delivery approach for the improvements on Garin Island as it will allow us to obtain the services of the best qualified contractor that complete the project on a tight schedule and at a price that will be lower than the design bid build process. And under this scenario, we would have all the improvements in place for the ozone facility by spring of 2021, and it would be operational for that summer algal toxin season. That concludes my presentation, and if there are any questions that you have to answer.
Very good. I have no one signed up for public comment. Anyone want to come up and comment on this? I know you're surprised, but... Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Counsel. I will close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy.
I move approval of resolution 2019-16.
Second by Anderson. Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay. Our next public hearing.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 1235 Hoffman Road Northeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during the public testimony. Again, a yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Ms. Cole.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Cole, planner with Community Development. Tonight, I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case C 732, 1235 Hoffman Road Northeast. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and the presentation into the official record. This annexation territory is contiguous to the city limits on its west side. The territory is approximately .555 acres, and that includes just under .01 acre of right-of-way of Hoffman Road Northeast. The urban growth boundary is just a little bit toward the east on the western edge of Corden Road Northeast. The territory is just one parcel. Because it's contiguous to city limits, annexation was required to obtain city services for a dwelling. The comprehensive plan map shows this one is designated single-family residential along with the adjacent properties. Properties across Hoffman Road are designated developing residential. Abutting property in the city to the west is zoned residential agriculture, and other nearby properties are either residential agriculture or single-family residential. The subject property and adjacent properties in Marion County are now zoned urban development, which is consistent with the single-family residential comprehensive plan designation. And the territory will automatically be zoned RS, single-family residential, upon annexation. In the 2016 aerial, we can see the residential development near the subject property. The land just to the west is Royal Oaks Park. This is a voter-exempt annexation, exempt under Senate Bill 1573, and it may not be referred to the voters because the owners signed the annexation petition. The territory is in the urban growth boundary, subject to the Salem area comprehensive plan and contiguous to the city limits. Although it may not be referred to the voters, council still retains authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff found the proposed annexation met applicable criteria, including whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, allows orderly, efficient, timely provision of urban services, and serves the public interest. Therefore, we recommend that council find the petitioner, sign the valid triple-majority petition, determine the annexation satisfies the criteria, adopt Order 2019-02 ANX, apply City of Salem's single-family residential zoning, and withdraw the territory from Marion County Fire District Number 1 and East Salem Sewer and Drainage District. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Great. I don't have anyone signed up from the public. Counselor Anderson for staff.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Cole. I just have a question about the zoning, the park to the west that was zoned RA. Is that what parks are normally zoned, or do parks have a different zone?
Parks are allowed in the RA zone. Sometimes we see that the parks are zoned for public amusement as well.
Okay. So it's not a situation where all of a sudden that park could be surrounded by annex lands, and then somebody's going to come in and say, "Well, it's RA, so maybe I'd like to build something other than a park there."
I don't believe the city would allow that.
I don't think so either. Yeah, I just want to establish that right now. Okay, thanks.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So anybody thinking of putting a subdivision on our parks, knock it off. Is that... Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that one. Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we find the petitioners have signed a valid triple-majority petition for annexation of the territory in conformance of the Oregon revised statutes, Chapter 222. We determine the petition satisfies the criteria of Salem revised Code 260.2060C and adopt Order 2019-02 ANX, and that we apply the city of Salem RS residential agriculture zone to the territory for Marion County urban development, and withdraw the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number 1 and the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District.
Second by Ossik. Do you want to explain your motion, or would you like...
No, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay. We have another one?
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at the 4700 block of Lancaster Drive Northeast. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during public testimony. Yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired.
Thank you. Ms. Cole.
Good evening. I'm still Pamela Cole, still planner with Community Development Department, as far as I know. And tonight, I'm presenting the staff report for annexation case number C 727 for a property in the 4700 block of Lancaster Drive Northeast. The common addressing is 4743 to 4753 Lancaster Drive Northeast. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. This property is near the intersection of Lancaster and Portland Road Northeast. The territory is contiguous to the city limits on the east across Lancaster Drive Northeast. The territory is approximately 5.8 acres and includes about 1.3 acres of Lancaster right-of-way. This is one tax lot because it's contiguous to the city limits annexations required to obtain city services for future development and redevelopment of the commercial property. The territory is designated commercial on the comprehensive plan map, along with others nearby, and some others in the area are designated multifamily residential. Properties across Lancaster are either commercial or single-family residential. The abutting property in the city across Lancaster is RM 2 multifamily residential, and other nearby properties in the city are zoned CR, retail, commercial. Outside the city limits, the Marion County zoning of the subject property is currently CG, commercial, general, and other nearby properties are Marion County Commercial Retail and Commercial Office. Those are all consistent with the commercial comprehensive plan designation. The Marion County zones other than RS and Urban Transition 5 and UD are here shown in white, so it's a little bit more difficult to see the lines between the different types of zones. The territory itself would automatically be zoned general commercial upon annexation. The properties to the north and the west are in commercial uses now. The existing buildings on the subject property were constructed in the mid-1970s. The area on the east side of Lancaster is still primarily residential. Again, this is a voter-exempt annexation, and I'm not going to read the rest. It's the same as what I had said earlier. The annexation criteria. Staff did find that the proposed annexation meets the criteria.
Okay. I have... Are you done?
And the recommendation to adopt a petition, et cetera.
Okay. Go ahead.
As on the screen. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? There's no one from the public signed up? All righty. I'm... Was anyone curious why Lancaster Drive was inside the boundaries of that annexation? Any curiosity? Or is it just me that didn't know?
Oh, or Portland Road.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Ossik.
Okay. I'll move the staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation. Second by... Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Okay. The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the planning administrator's decision, approving a tentative subdivision review with a Class 2 adjustment application for permit case number SUB ADJ 19-03 for property located at 600 block of Mildred Lane Southeast. The criteria applicable to this appeal is SRC 205.010D and SRC 250.005D2. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. A failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue shall preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. The applicant's limited to 10 minutes. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired.
Good. Olivia, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Olivia Glance, Planner with the Community Development Department. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and this presentation to the record. We're here for subdivision Class II Adjustment 1903 at the 600 block of Mildred Lane. The request is to divide approximately 10 acres into 48 lots with an adjustment to re-designate front property lines of several parcels. The Planning Administrator's Decision was made on May 6 and was not appealed prior to the appeal period ending. The subject property is located in South Salem, north of Mildred Lane, between Lone Oak and Sunnyside Road. The property is just south of Sumner Elementary School and west of the Sunnyside Community The properties and those abutting the property to the east and west are zoned "residential agriculture." South of Mildred Lane is Phase 8 of Creekside Subdivision, and north of the subject property is Ironwood Estates. Both of those are zoned "single-family residential." As you can see in the aerial photo of the property, there's a large stand of fir trees located along the east property line. These are trees on the neighboring neighbor's property, and I will speak more about those trees later as they are relevant to the width of the road. So here's the subdivision map. We've reoriented the subdivision map. Mildred is now on your left, and north would be to your right. The Planning Administrator reviewed and determined that the proposed subdivision met the applicable decision criteria code requirements except for the width of East Street. Here it's listed Emirate Valley Avenue, which is to help with the preservation of the neighbor's trees mentioned earlier. In addition, the applicant has requested an adjustment to re-designate front property lines of Lot 8, 19, and 34, highlighted in red. The original decision did include adjustments for Lot 44 and 43, but as discussed on page 22 of the Planning Administrator's Decision, the adjustment was not necessary. So we have some pictures of the subject property. We are on Mildred, looking east and west. The property would be on the opposite side, so you can see the fir trees when you're looking And then this is the subject property looking north toward Sumner Elementary and the Ironwood Estates. And then looking south from Ironwood Estates back towards Mildred, you can see the neighbor's trees, a large stand of fir trees on that eastern property line. There were several conditions placed on the application to protect the sanded trees located on the east property line of the neighbor's property. Those conditions are 8 through 12. The intent was to protect and preserve those trees and their root zone. The original notice received five comments regarding traffic, open space, and the proposed adjustment. Schools being overcrowded, those comments are addressed in the Planning Administrator's Decision on Pages 5 and 6. There has not been any comments received in response to the public notice for tonight. Staff recommends that council affirm the Planning ... Sorry, that's a mistake. The Planning Administrator's Decision and approve the application. Do you have any questions?
Not yet. Jeff Tross, and then Don Luley.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bennett, members of the council. Jeff Tross, Tross Consulting, Inc., 1720 Liberty Street, Southeast Salem, 97302. Here tonight on behalf of Don Luley and LP Holdings, in which he is the principal and the applicant for the subdivision. Mr. Luley is with us tonight. He's available to answer questions, as is Jason Ledoux, an ISA-certified arborist who developed the tree protection plan that applies to the trees on the neighbor's property to the east. So we concur in the staff report, the original decision and its findings, its very thorough review of the criteria that apply to this subdivision and the adjustment that was requested. This is a very conventional subdivision, which is similar to those around it with the additional feature of special measures to protect the trees that are on the neighboring property. And it's important to note, those trees are not on the subject property, so they're not subject to the application, but because they're right on the property line, and they are large, mature trees, and have a root zone that projects over the east line or the common property line, Mr. Luley has developed plans to help protect that root zone to make sure those trees are not impacted by the development of the subdivision. And that was discussed in the staff report. And as Olivia just pointed out, the protection plan is the subject of five conditions of approval, numbers 8 through 12, in the original Planning Administrator's Decision. Interestingly, this property is already location of two major city utility lines, a sewer line and a storm drain line that run its entire north-south length, from where Springwood Avenue deadends in the property on the north, all the way down to Mildred Lane. Those city utilities were put in in 1998 to serve the Creekside Phase 5, I believe, located across Mildred Lane to the south. There are manholes that are built above ground surface level, anticipating future grading and paving of streets, and the manholes occupy approximately four locations as you travel north to south or south to north through the property. So here we have a site that appears to be vacant, but which is already the location of major city utilities that are available for use. When those storm drain line and sewer line were installed in 1998, the property was cleared at that time. It was an old orchard. While the growth was cleared, the stumps were left in the ground, and as is typical of fruit trees in an orchard, they tend to grow back in a rather haphazard fashion, and some of those were ... The remaining trees were cleared out in anticipation of this development. So, Springwood Avenue, which will also extend the full length north to south, as you see on the overhead, follows the route of those subsurface utility lines, which are ... That's not going to work, is it? Just look at Springwood Avenue, and you know where those utility lines are, and I can't quite show it with my laser pointer. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Any questions? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Tross.
Sure.
I may be wrong, but I thought when I looked at this earlier, and maybe it's a different development, you're not ... There's no conditions about the grading of the road more than the 10% or more than 12% up to 15%. All the roads that'll be built there are within the grading specifications of the city code.
That's right. You're not wrong. There have been various amendments to the plan as it went through the process, but all of the grades currently meet the 12% or less standard.
So at one point, there was some question about 15%, but that's gone now.
That's gone now.
Oh, good, because I thought I was the one who was mistaken in what I saw.
You could have been.
Yeah, I could have been, but not this time.
Maybe not this time. Some other time, maybe.
Counselor Ossick.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and especially for pointing out the efforts to work with an arborist for tree preservation. My question, in looking at the materials, it said that the subject property is within the South Gateway Neighborhood Association. It says notice was provided, and no comments were received from the Neighborhood Association before the comment deadline. Did you receive any untimely comments from the Neighborhood Association?
No, we have not. I think that's also an appropriate question to ask staff, because that's where the comments would go. But we are not aware of any comments.
Okay, and if I don't see any staff stand up, I'll assume that's consistent.
We have not received any comments from the Neighborhood Association to date.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Leo.
Thank you. I actually have some questions that might actually go to staff, but maybe you could answer it depending.
Sure, I'll try.
One of them had to do with the Salem Kaiser School District didn't provide any concerns or comments prior to the staff report being published. Was there anything submitted at all? Nope. Okay. Then I also had some questions about the traffic impact analysis. I don't know.
Well, a traffic impact analysis was not required because the development, the traffic that's projected to be generated from the development does not meet the threshold standard that would require a TIA. So none was required for this application according to standards.
That's correct, and we can add ... The Assistant Traffic Engineer is here. Would you like him to answer that question?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Well, I might elaborate on that. That Springwood Avenue will join Mildred Avenue on the south. Mildred is classified in the city's transportation plan as a minor arterial, and the design standard, the design traffic volume for a minor arterial is 7,000 to 20,000 vehicles per day. And of course, there's already a certain level of traffic on Mildred Avenue, but the threshold standard for a TIA to be done is 1,000 trips per day, and this development doesn't even come close. But other than that, that's an appropriate question for Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tony Martin, Assistant City Traffic Engineer. Mr. Tross is correct. The threshold for a TIA that has access to an arterial, and Mildred is a minor arterial, is greater than 1,000 trips per day. The 48 lots generates about 450 expected daily trips.
Okay, I guess one of my main concerns, I'm not sure this is the place to be asking. There's several different developments that's going to be occurring along Mildred. This is being one of them. Then further along on the, I don't know what directional wise, off of Liberty and Mildred, there's a bunch of new developments in that general area, too. Am I ... I don't know if this is the right place to be asking that question.
Norm, do you know, Counselor is asking about sort of an area development pattern. Do you happen to know? I didn't see Lisa here right now.
There certainly is a lot of development activity in the general area that you're describing, but when it comes to this particular case, I think I want to make sure that we can answer any questions, whether it be Lisa, who has the best knowledge on the development that's happening in that area, or of course, Olivia, who's managing this case. We want to make sure that we can answer any questions directly related to this case, first and foremost, for you. So is there any particular concern related to the traffic impacts of this particular subdivision?
Yes, just because I had a few conversations with some individuals in the community who were more concerned about the, like, traffic speeding, particularly within this general area. I understand that there was a traffic speed recorder that was placed out in that general area, and the results came back, and I already had spoken to Chief Moore about that. And was that also taken in consideration, knowing that this build was going to be placed there?
Counselor, I'm going to stop you for a second. You're essentially declaring ex parte context, so we need to know kind of what's going on here.
Okay.
Who'd you talk to? When'd you talk to them?
It was Arlie Mooney. He had sent out a few emails, which this was started off a few months ago. He was more concerned about traffic, the speed of traffic along Mildred Lane.
On the subdivision?
Not necessarily on the subdivision, but just speeding on the street.
Anyone else?
No, that was just ...
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, besides a message that I had back and forth with Chief Moore, but ...
No, no, that's a different deal.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I just want to be sure to understand, because this is affecting your opinion on this subdivision, and I want to make sure everybody knows who you've been talking to and what's going on here.
Okay.
So it's not to this subdivision, it's to the general traffic on Mildred.
General traffic on Mildred.
Excellent, thank you, Counselor.
Of course.
Go ahead, Mr. Martin, explain the traffic.
Mildred is a minor arterial. It has traffic, and it's posted 35 miles an hour. And believe it or not, there are people that drive in the city that don't necessarily obey the traffic laws. Mildred is not eligible for speed humps for slowing traffic. It's a firelife safety route. It's not something that would be allowed. There's plenty of capacity in Mildred to handle this subdivision and many others. It's designed to carry a lot of traffic.
I guess my main concern is just, you just mentioned, too, that speeding does occur on Mildred. So if people were coming out of, like, a Springwood Evelyn Valley into Mildred, is there going to be some sort of safety in place? Otherwise, they'll just say that cars are speeding by both directions?
I think what you're suggesting is that traffic on Mildred is so fast that no one can turn out of that intersection to get onto Mildred.
It's more along the lines of, if I remember how Mildred looks like, it's sort of on a hill.
This particular section is at the low spot. That's why the sewer line comes out here. Across the street is Sawgrass. It's a little stub that goes into Creekside. It's been there for many, many years. It has adequate visibility in both directions, so people pulling out can see cars before they ...
I wonder, just to kind of move through this, if what you might be looking at is making contact with the Citizens Advisory Traffic Commission to look at signage, speeds, things like that. We have a committee that'll work on that issue, so you can kind of get a handle on it, and your constituent can also come in and participate in that. Does that sound okay?
That sounds fine to me.
Okay. Why don't we make sure the Counselor knows how to do that?
You know, I'd be happy to talk to you about what tools we have in our toolbox.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All righty. Mr. Luley, did you want to come up?
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Luley? Okay. Any questions for staff? Olivia, who did that one? Olivia? Yeah. Any questions for Olivia? She kind of got off the hook on this one. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Leo, what would you like to do?
So we just talked about having a traffic committee. Is that, do I include that within this?
No, that's a separate issue dealing with other ... You raised some interesting points on traffic on Mildred and things like that, but you're talking more about traffic control, which would be separate from this land use decision at this point.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was using the right phrase. All right. So I make the motion that staff recommends the City Council affirm the May 6, 2019 Planning Administrator's Decision.
Here's my second. Hoy. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oops, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of a discussion. I think what Counselor Leung is really looking at, if you look at that's the north side of Mildred, there are four or five other big lots right there that are certainly going to be developed, and going to be developed to that probably the same single-family number of homes and stuff. But my guess is that even with all those were to develop, it's still within the capacity of the street there. And I guess I'm looking at, Mr. Martin, is that correct?
No.
Okay, Mr. Martin said it would. But we run into this problem, but you incrementally, and all of a sudden, you get to the top, and then the next one starts to spill over. But we don't get to that here, because the street is still big enough to handle everything that might be developed on single-family lots on the north side of Mildred.
I believe so.
Okay.
There's plenty of capacity.
And I understand that that has nothing to do with this particular one, but at some point, it might, but you're telling me it won't, because there's enough capacity already on Mildred.
There's plenty of capacity, and then as we extend these streets, we interconnect them, so they're not all coming out to Mildred necessarily.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move on to Special Orders of Business. I'm going to take one out of order. I'm going to call on Counselor Leung on 6B. We've had folks cooling their heels long enough on this. Move that one out. You had asked, hadn't you asked about this, or do you want to make the motion?
I wanted to make a motion.
Motion?
Six for 6B, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to pull, call up 6B 19-274, the Planning Administrator's Decision on the subdivision Class 1 Adjustment Case Number SUB-ADJ19-01- ... Did I need to read it all?
That's the one.
Okay.
Second by Hoy. Do you want to discuss it?
Just me first, or?
Yeah, it's your motion.
I wasn't sure, huh?
No, no, that's fine.
So there are some concerns that I had specifically with this. So, there are some concerns that I had specifically with this. One of them has to do with the tree line, another one, the transportation plan, and also the alternative to the refinement plan. Probably, I can't read my writing, fortunately. And that's, so those are some of the things I wanted to talk about.
Very good. Anyone else want to comment? Yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bennett. I support calling up for a hearing and having an opportunity to be heard for all members of the community at the appropriate time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add, I'll second that comment. I think it is always tempting to, when you've got a difficult issue you're, you're involved in, to, to almost overstate the case. And I'm afraid we're getting close to that. We will have a full public hearing on this if this motion passes, give everyone a chance to share all of their concerns. So I, I really appreciate that people were willing to kind of forego the opportunity to keep talking on this stuff. Counselor Anderson.
And I would also say that this is a rather hard decision, or could be a hard decision. And I think it's appropriate that council, as the elected members, are the ones who make it, as opposed to the planning commission. That's why we get paid the big bucks to do that.
You're a hero. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, who seconded this? I say, ah, Hoi. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will have a hearing on this to be set at some future date, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just a moment. I'm going to move the staff review existing local government practices to preserve the affordability and long-term stability of mobile home parks and return to council with a recommendation.
Second.
Second by Nanki. There's discussion here, but I, I want to just tell you, I think this fits well into affordability, our aging in place, the list kind of goes on. And I'm just deeply concerned about what's happening at Sundown, but I think potentially every mobile home park faces this problem. This is some of the, well, I think personally, it's some of the only affordable housing in this community. These are very stable neighborhoods, stable communities. But I'd like to understand, without saying, let's do what Portland, let's just look at what's been done in other places, and what can be legally done to protect these places. I, I just think it's real important. They're very, they just work really well, so, for a whole bunch of reasons. So I appreciate your support on this. Okay, I'll, oh, sorry.
This is a question for the city attorney. We talked about, at least the people who testified were saying something about the property may have changed hands. Is anything we might do going to be affected either way by the fact that the property has changed, changed hands? I don't think it will. I just am curious.
No, I can't imagine just the fact that the property changed ownership would affect any future legislation.
Okay. Are we okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. What else have I got here? Your motion. What have you got, sir?
I pulled 3.3B and 3 point.
We have 3.2D pulled by staff to begin with.
That's right. Yeah, let's get that one out. I don't want staff to have to hang out waiting for us. You want to make your motion? They don't get to make motions. Let's, let's get the motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2019-22 as revised by staff.
Second. Second by Kaiser. Okay.
Thank you. Kelly Jacobs with the Budget Office. The revision to Resolution 2019-22 is the addition of $20,000. I placed a copy of the revised resolution on your desk, and it changes the total amount being appropriated for year-end transfers from $370,000 to $390,000. And the $20,000 addition ensures that we remain compliant with Oregon budget law in the category of personal services in the, in the non-divisional cost center of the general fund.
Great. Questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, Counselor Anderson.
I'll do 3.3B first, which is the capital improvement plan. I move the staff recommendation that we adopt the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024.
Second. Second by Hoi. Counselor.
Thank you. I pulled this for the reason relating to, I'm in favor of the capital improvement plan, but I pulled it because of the State Street plan that we spent a lot of time on, a lot of public time, a lot of staff time, a lot of council time. And we came up with a very good plan, and it was a good compromise with everybody's interest. And it's not in the capital improvement plan, so it's another plan on the shelf. And we've had these kind of discussions lately, and I particularly point to another plan of this nature that was done when I was President of SCAN, which was for the Liberty Commercial Corridor from Mission Street to Owen. And we came up with a great plan there, and it had a lot of the elements that the State Street plan has, and that would have been six years ago, maybe, maybe eight years ago. And nothing's been done on that plan. It's still on the shelf, and I, I'm not necessarily, well, I could complain about that, but that's not my issue. I don't want to see that happen to the State Street plan after all the work we did on it. So I would ask that we have something in the next capital improvement plan. I'm looking at the city manager and the Public Works Director, and hoping that we can start to see some movement toward developing a State Street corridor plan that we worked so hard on.
Just imagine my disappointment after 13 years, still looking at only two blocks of State Street going two ways.
Yes.
Join the club here. But it's, it's the Fernandez Fan Club. How are you gonna solve this one, Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Counselor, I appreciate your frustration. Often, we do plans, and once the plans are adopted by council, then we work diligently to identify funding. And the capital improvement plan is all about identifying, placing identified funding or anticipated funding, so that we know how we're going to spend it over the next five years. There is no identified funding yet for the State Street plan. You, the council, I believe, two weeks ago, did pass some grant information where we are chasing funding for the Liberty Commercial Plan, because we've identified the potential for some funding at SCATS to be able to do those projects. And we weighed, as we were looking at what projects to, to go after in that program, we weighed State Street versus Liberty Commercial versus others, and just, you know, what's the funding type, et cetera. And we decided that Liberty Commercial was the, the better candidate for that money. But we had not forgotten about State Street. So, so as soon as funding is identified, either through grants, other programs, or a future bond issue, that's when you'll see it in the CIP. But just because they're on the shelf, they are not forgotten by staff, and we are always chasing possible funding.
Thank you very much, Director Fernandez. And I look forward to some future funding for the State Street plan, and I'm also happy that we're seeing something that might be happening on the Liberty Commercial.
Ms. Nardine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to echo support for that as well. As someone who has worked in a government building off of State Street for the last probably 12 years or so, I've made a real effort to support the locally owned and operated businesses that are on State Street. I know people who live in that area, and I know many, many state workers and others who work and go to work in that area every single day. In addition, a lot of those state workers don't live in Salem, and so they commute to and from that State Street area every single day, and that is their impression of our city. It's based on a, a location that has tremendous potential. And I recognize, having served on Budget Committee, how there's never enough funds to do all of the good work that we want to do, to support the livability, to help businesses thrive in our community, and so on. So I'm supportive and will be watchful for opportunities to support capital improvements to the State Street area. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Anderson, do you have another one?
Yes, sir. This is 3.2F. I move that council adopts Resolution 2019-24, adopting the fiscal year 2020 city of Salem budget.
Second. Second by Leon. Was it you?
Yeah.
Sorry. Second by Kaiser. Excuse me.
The only thing I want to, the only reason I pulled this is just because there was some concern about the, the $50,000 for climate action, and the way it showed up on the, the agenda was just climate action. And I, the staff has, I don't know if it's amended would be the right term, but the staff has added, so now it says climate action plan and activities. And I think that's more appropriate, and I think that's also clearly in keeping with the motion that was made and with the council sentiments.
Very good. Any further discussion? Okay, this is on the broad issue of budget. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Oh, no on the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Nanki's a no. Motion passes. Okay, we're two. Did you pull 3.3C? Okay. Go ahead. It's your pleasure.
Thank you. So the reason why I wanted to pull a 3.3C is primarily.
I need to make a motion.
Oh, whoops. I make a motion to pull a 3.3C.
No. No, you, you make a recommend, you, you have a, why don't you do the staff recommendation and then talk about it and see if we can amend it for you or something?
Okay. I move the staff recommendation.
Very good. Second by Anderson. No?
Who?
Hoi. Okay. Okay, now go ahead and discuss it.
Thank you. So I wanted to pull this one up in particular, because I was pleased to see that the interest by quite a few number of, of our citizens who are interested in being parts of these boards and commissions. I think that these boards and commissions are valuable for our community, as well as provides a leadership opportunity for individuals who otherwise would, has an idea in terms of some of the work that the city provides to the community. I also want to call up that, you know, these are great opportunities within all these different areas, and that I look forward to hopefully meeting quite a few of these new individuals who's, who will be serving on the boards and commissions soon.
Great. Great. Any further discussion on boards and commissions? Aside all of us, I'm sure, second, Counselor Leon's sentiment on this. This is really a great, great group of people, a great opportunity for people to be involved. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Now, we had some information reports. Anyone have anything on information reports they want to, okay? Okay, first readings.
Ordinance Bill number 719, an ordinance relating to human rights, amending SRC 97.010, 97.060, and 97.085, and creating 97.065.
Counselor Hoi?
I move we advance ordinance bill 7-19, amending SRC Chapter 97, Human Rights, to second reading for enactment.
Second. Second by Kaiser. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we have a second reading. Now, this is gonna take a minute, you guys. This is the Unified Development Act, so.
Okay.
Someone get her a glass of water?
That's right. Engrossed Ordinance Bill number 619, an ordinance relating to land use, amending SRC 50.710, 64.005, .275, .300, 111.001, 200.020, .025, .035, .050, .080, .205, .210, .310, .315, .350, 205, .030, .055, .060, .070, 210, .025, .035, 220, .005, .010, 225, .010, 235, .015, 240, .010, 245, .010, 250, .0, point, excuse me, 250, .010, 300.100, .210, .230, .300, .310, .320, .320, .420, .520, .620, .720, .810, .820, .830, .970, 400.065, 521, .005, 523, .005, 524, .005, 525, .015, 531, .030, 533, .015, 534, .015, 535, .015, 551, .010, 556, .015, 603, .025, 604, .025, 605, .025, 616, .025, 617, .025, 619, .025, 626, .025, 631, .020, 632, .020, 633, .020, 800.035, .050, 806, .055, .060, renumbering and amending SRC 64, 3, 64.320, .325, .330, .510, repealing SRC 64.305, .315, .335, 200.045, 300.990, 512, .005, and creating new provisions, 50.720, 300.1045, and 800.065.
Hence closed caption. Aye.
Counselor Cook, absent. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leon?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, is there any further public comment? We are adjourned.